Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask that you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And to begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Tanya Bowers?
Present.
Joseph Campos? Paul Mendez? Kim Lerman?
Present.
Abel Campos? Isaac Myron?
Present.
Rachel Teal?
Present.
Jay Hindler?
Present.
Jerry Cochran?
Present.
Madam Chair, there are six members present and we do have a quorum. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's meetings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on-demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available online and in the back room and on the City of Pasco's website so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask the audience that you mute your microphones to prevent interruption during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please raise your hand so that we know that you would like to address the commission. Speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings, like the one being held this evening, not only to be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any items on the agenda? Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. We value your input. We, as the Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record the city council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the February 18th, 2021 meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Commissioner Handler, I so move.
Put your microphone on. Okay.
Commissioner Handler, I so move.
Commissioner Cochran, seconds.
It has been moved by Commissioner Handler, seconded by Commissioner Cochran. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have a series of public hearings this evening. The first item is a block grant, which is a request for, this is actually CAPER 2020, and this is Master File BGAP 2021-001. We will start our discussion with comments from the city staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Angela Pittman, our block grant coordinator, is on the line tonight so she'll be giving this brief PowerPoint presentation virtually.
Terrific.
Okay, am I on?
You are.
Yes.
Okay, okay, the item before you tonight is the last step in the CDBG grant cycle for program year 2020. As a quick reminder, the grant cycle begins in May when we issue an RFP requesting proposals for activities that will be conducted in the following grant year. Public hearings are then conducted in June and July and recommendations sent to council for approval. In 2019, council approved Resolutions 3911 and 3919 that approved the CDBG allocations for 2020 and the 2020-2024 consolidated plan, which included that first-year annual supplement. During the year, activities are carried out in accordance with the plan, and then three months after the end of the program year, the CAPER is due to HUD. This report reports our progress on meeting the goals that are established in the annual action plan. The next few slides will briefly summarize our performance in carrying out those goals and strategies in 2020. The next slide, please. Okay, this screen summarizes the budget to actual for the 2020 Annual Action Plan activities by goal. Goal number one in our plan is for affordable housing activities. Goal number two is community and economic development, and that includes infrastructure improvement. And goal number three is for homeless housing and priority public needs. Originally, Resolution 3911 approved our budget for like 1.129 million, but throughout the course of the year, when HUD gives us our entitlement, sometimes the number goes up, sometimes it goes down. So we kind of work into our plan contingent projects so that we don't have to go back through the public review process each time we make funding adjustments. At the end of 2020, we ended up with a budget of approximately 1.419 million, and our expenditures were 591,935. So, as you can see in the percentage, we were pretty close to our percentages of what we estimated. What we didn't estimate or didn't count on was the additional funds that HUD gave us for CDBGCV to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19. So those also adjusted our budget for 2020. Next slide. So this is just a graph of the same numbers showing how close we were to our actual proposed. In some cases, like for the infrastructure project, that's a multi-year project, and so it will not actually be reported until it's finished. And we also have additional funds in that project from prior year funding. And then the last slide is basically our accomplishments. How many people were benefited, proposed to actual in the 2020 annual plan? So we estimated, pretty close, and again, the public facilities activity, that's not completed, and so we won't be able to report those beneficiaries until that project is completed and closed in IDIS. I know that was really brief. There's a lot of information in the report, and the appendix that has the IDIS reports has a lot of different information in there. So if there's anything I can help or any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to give it a try.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pittman, for that information and for all the effort that was put into this CAPER, if you will. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Cochran?
Yeah, so I'm just curious, and I think you could go back a slide or two to the graphs. And I was just curious on the ones that severely under-executed, there's like three of them maybe, the administration and planning, and the decent housing rental, and then the last one, economic opportunities. Can you maybe talk about some of the reasons why the actuals were so much lower in a couple of those, or a few of those cases? And, you know, maybe it's just the year, or is there some significant reasons why the projects held or didn't happen, or just interested in the ones that under-executed?
Okay, so for the first one, administrative and planning for CB, that is the coronavirus. And so we underspent in admin, which is a good thing, because a lot of times we have a lot of charges or hours that we can't charge directly to the project, and we're capped on how much we can actually use for admin. So we did really well in using our time wisely, and so that one is significantly lower than what we estimated. For the decent housing, the rental rehabilitation, that project has just started out. The 18,000 was actually for a partial payment for a project that was completed at the beginning of 2021. And we have another project. Those projects take a little bit longer to work through, and so usually when we fund them, we kind of figure a couple of years to get that money spent, because they don't always go as fast. It depends on how much house capability we have in-house. On economic opportunities, that was the PSK, and that also includes funding on the last bar for microenterprises, and those were really slow-rolling out. The Pasco specialty kitchen itself was impacted, and they didn't have quite as many jobs created or as much money coming in as they estimated, and so they didn't spend their full amount. The coronavirus, the CB funds, the same thing. We got to the end of that, and there was so much other funding out there from CRF that we didn't spend that full amount. But it will be eventually rolled over and used for another contingent project that was approved for those funds.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. I actually have a follow-up. If you turn to page 29 in the CAPER, where it talks about community housing improvement, minor rehab program, I was actually looking at the number assisted, and there weren't any individuals listed for that, but I will take, was that because, which you were referring to Mr. Cochran's question, Commissioner Cochran's question, about that $18,000, which didn't get spent until the end of last year?
That is correct.
Great.
That's correct. There are actually four households that are going to be reported in 2021 for that project. And again, because that didn't complete until the following year, we were not able, the numbers don't show up in IDIS until we actually completed.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, one other question that I had, this is at the very back, it's page three, and page three, when it starts, we have the blue print. It says count of activities, dispersments. So page three, I think, is that, again, it's talking housing, non-housing, the people impacted? So these ended up being the total numbers by race/ethnicity? Is that correct?
I am trying to figure out which page you're on. Is it CR10 that you're looking at, the race and ethnicity?
It says CDBG beneficiaries by race/ethnicity.
There's multiple page threes.
There are multiple page threes. It's the first one that's got the blue heading. Oh, I see what you're saying. There are three. I mean, there are several. It's towards the back.
Yes, Angie, it's CDBG beneficiaries by racial slash ethnic category.
That's what I just said. But when Mr. White says it.
Which, is there a number on the report?
Yeah, there, no, there isn't.
If it's part of the IDIS appendices?
Yes.
There'll be a number usually on the bottom or the top.
No, unless it's, no, never, there isn't.
Okay, let me try to search it.
Yeah, it's after the pages that finished with the...
Angie, it's got total persons 174, total Hispanic 44, total households 3, and total Hispanic household 0.
Kristen, do you know which report that's on, because the demographics is reported in a couple of them?
Yeah, it's the, it's the third page after the numbered pages end, at 30...
It's a summary of accomplishments.
Summary of accomplishments.
Okay, let me get there.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Cochran. At any rate, I was just, I was somewhat surprised by the racial/ethnic demographics there, and I was just wondering, is the catchment area all of Pasco? Or are we talking about specific zoning codes? Did you find it yet?
No, I haven't found where you're at yet, but let me try to explain some of the things. So the race and ethnicity is only entered in when it's a specific, like low-mod clientele, and we count income for that person, or low-mod households. So those are the only times, and so we have the senior center that reports that demographic information. Our rehab will report it, and if we have anything that's low-mod clientele. For the most part, we do things with a low-mod area benefit, which counts a lot more people, but it doesn't give us that breakdown. But the census tracts that we are primarily working in are the four that we've been working in all along, is 201, 202, 203, and 204. So we needed to, I mean, this doesn't report all of those demographics. I could pull up extra information to plug into this if that's warranted or if it helps to show that what the demographics are in those census tracts.
Yeah, I was just curious. I was just curious about that.
And Madam Chair, this came up, I think, last year also. We'll follow up. We'll send the commission an email and maybe attach it as a summary to the bottom of that page, whatever it is.
Yeah, that would be helpful, because I do recall that this was a question that we had last year, and...
It's the way that it reports, but yeah, we'll do that.
Yeah, it's the way that, in fact, if you're, if I found the one that you're looking at, this is for the senior center. If it's IDI, if it's got 17 total?
No, it's not, Angie. I dubbed it, so we'll be able to find it.
Okay, great. If you flagged it, and then we'll follow up and figure out. There are some things that are not really reporting as accurately as we would like in IDIS, and so we have to go in and sometimes override or hardcode them. But in certain areas, we're not permitted to do that. I mean, it just gives us, what it gives us, and these are the reports that HUD requires for us to run and provide with our CAPER. So it's, you know, we might even need to reach out to them saying, "Why isn't this working right?"
That makes sense to me. Okay, if, do we have any more questions?
Actually, just for Commissioner Lerman and perhaps Commissioner Teal, first time through with this. The Planning Commission is the city's block grant advisory body. So the commission holds up public hearings and conducts and listens to testimony. Every year, Pasco gets a certain amount of money by right from the federal government based on population, income levels, and number of households. And the commission doesn't make a final recommendation, or excuse me, a final decision, but they make a recommendation to council, and I think it's been maybe like 10, 12 years since council has ever done anything different than the commission has recommended. What you are hearing tonight is the reporting on the recommendation by the commission, the decision by council that occurred during this year, which was really an odd year. We had a huge amount of money thrown, all cities did, and counties, because of the COVID pandemic. And it does look odd to see those big blue graphs and not much orange following them, or whatever color that is, but it, and there still is a lot of money out there. The good news is, is that contrary to the other fund of COVID money that had to be spent, I think, by December, we have a whole year to spend this. So next year, the graphs will look a lot different.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. White. Okay, if we don't have any other comments, I would entertain a motion. Thank you so much, Commissioner Cochran. All right, so we don't have anyone in the audience right now, but we are still open to audience members who may have questions or comments. We don't have any. Okay, all right, but thank you for raising that. I would, I didn't even bother opening the public hearings, so let me just say it one more time, even though there aren't any people in the audience. Any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. And I will take it that no one has any comments. So with that, I will say, going, going. Okay, that wasn't loud enough. All right, now, I would entertain a motion.
Is the motion to recommend the report to the council, is that the motion?
It's on the first page of the staff report.
Yeah, you got it right there.
It's just not bold, I guess.
Any of you can make the motion.
I move that the Planning Mission calls a public hearing and recommend the city manager to approve the 2020 Consolidated Annual Plan evaluation report has presented.
Second it. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. I was a little too fast on that, apologies. Okay, let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner Cochran, seconded by Commissioner Lerman. The motion passed unanimously. And can we have an explanation of the path forward?
This is actually, from here on out, it's administrative. So it goes to the city manager who signs it, and then it'll be filed as, Angie keeps mentioning something called IDS. That's HUD's tracking software, that you don't want to know anything about, believe me.
We will leave that to you. All right, thank you very much. We next are going to Item B, which is a request for a code amendment. This is House Bill 1923 duplex, triplex, and courtyard apartments, and this is Master File CA 2020-001. We will start with a discussion or comment, we will start our discussion with comments from city staff.
Good evening, Planning Commission. This proposal has been in the works for quite some time. It's been discussed at six prior Planning Commission meetings, including five public hearings. This particular item is one of three that the city council authorized staff to pursue related to House Bill 1923, which was enacted by the Washington State Legislature in the summer of 2019. Go to the next slide. As a reminder to the Planning Commission, the Washington State Department of Commerce has awarded Pasco for our efforts to intend to adopt amendments compliant with the Washington State legislation. With that said, this proposal is to allow a duplex, triplex, or courtyard apartment in one or more residential zoning districts that today exclude multifamily units. In order to, on the next slide. The next slide. And in order to adequately prepare a recommendation for the commission today, it was necessary to really understand and answer the following questions. What is Pasco's current housing supply and characteristics? What are the housing needs for individuals in Pasco? What are some of the key policies that are either encouraging or prohibiting housing? And can we meet the demands of the future? So with that in mind, we prepared a few slides to try to summarize some of the information we've shared with the Planning Commission really over the past year. Been a lot of information, a lot of data, so we're trying to summarize that over the next few slides here. On the current housing supply, just a few key points. 70% of all housing in Pasco is owner occupied. Rental units have slightly higher household sizes. That's data from the Washington State Office of Financial Management sends that to the city. 13% of all of our housing has been built since 2010. 45% of all of our housing in the city has been built since 2000. The overwhelming majority of homes in Pasco are detached, single-family units. 75% of all homes in Pasco are single-family detached units. This is one of the highest percentages across similar-sized cities in our region. Less than 8% of all housing in Pasco has more than 10 units of apartments. And 6.5% of our housing in Pasco are those living in mobile homes, RVs, boats, et cetera. That's actually one of the highest, second highest across one of the similar-sized cities in our region as well. So on the next slide, some of the housing needs for individuals in Pasco. So while median income for Pasco households has steadily increased, so has the percentage of cost burden renters. If you remember from some of our earlier presentations, the HUD Housing and Urban Development Department classifies cost burden as those households who spend 30% or more of their income on housing costs. Extremely cost burden is those that spend more than 50% of their household income on housing. So again, that's been increasing here locally. 17% on some form of supplemental income or benefits, and over 15% below the poverty level. And that's likely a dated graph already. That's from 2018, from Zillow, indicating, I believe, 282,000 was the median sale price, so that's already dated. And obviously, the home and rental prices have increased at a much higher pace than the income and wages here locally. So current policies, you remember these graphs. On the left is the residential land use distribution within the city limits. Again, overwhelmingly, low-density residential, less than 16% for medium and high density. And on the right side, you see a map of that through the zoning, the current zoning within the city limits. Again, multifamily... Again, multifamily is excluded from eighty-four percent of the residential zoning districts in Pasco. And and really, I think this is kind of a key point, too. Outside of central Pasco, most of our multifamily units is is centered along higher arterial speed, you know, Interstate 182, Road 100, Road 68. And those are areas where we obviously know that increased traffic has increased concerns regarding environmental health. You're talking about air quality, noise, safety actually crossing the street, et cetera. So I think there's some room for consideration there to expand opportunities for for multifamily housing. And this is a slide that asks can we meet our growth target? You may remember from the comprehensive plan and urban growth area discussions, we're growing rapidly. We need over fifteen thousand new homes in Pasco by the year 2038. And while the comprehensive plan and UGA were done in a in a way to allow for more flexibility and more appropriate land use designations to accommodate the growth, what didn't change was the underlying zoning. So we were able to accommodate that in the comprehensive plan effort by assuming we would see slightly increased densities in the medium and high density land use areas. We left the low density, which again is eighty-four percent of our land, or residential land alone. So while we were able to estimate that with those changes, we would meet our target. The reality is that our current zoning doesn't allow us to meet that info. We fall short by more than five thousand dwelling units. So with a increase to a slight increase to scenario two, which was the comprehensive plan, which means we take a look at our low density land use, take a look at the vacant parcels within the low density land use, so not redevelopment, just vacant, and increase the densities, we're able to achieve a little bit higher than we were in the comprehensive plan. And I I think one of the things also to consider is that we've always, I think over the last few series of of estimates from OFM, have been growing faster than the forecast. So can we meet our growth target? Not the way we do our zoning today, but that's the discussion of today's recommendation. So this is the first of, the first recommendation from staff today. It's very similar. In fact, it's the same recommendation from February's planning commission meeting. You may remember that there was a second option regarding, I'm not regarding, but that would add a special permit application. After discussions with the planning commission, comments from the planning commission, and reviewing kind of the additional time permitting, cost associated with a special permit, staff decided to leave that option out and recommend this one here. So this would allow duplexes in the RS 20, RS 12, and R1 districts. Duplexes would have to be connected to sewer. So that definitely meets the city's intent with efficiency of land uses and also ensuring that if we do have a slightly increased density that they're doing so connected to city utilities. It also excludes quite a bit of RS 20, because a lot of RS 20 will never have the opportunity to connect to sewer utilities. The triplex option under RS 20, again with sewer, but within one fourth mile of a public land use. So that would be a a hospital, a park, a school, a public bus route, et cetera. And also must be on a corner lot. The RS 12 is the same. And in RS 1 duplexes are permitted, triplexes permitted. And staff is recommending that we would permit courtyard apartments, which again are detached or attached units with the open space component, but on corner lots within a one fourth mile distance of a public land use. And in the R1 district, all those uses would be permitted. And R2 through R4, those uses are already permitted as well. And on the next slide, these are the development standards. These are a combination of what we saw in in February. So with the development standards here, the, there's changes to the maximum building height and lock coverage. So in the RS 1 district, we've left the height the same for the the height maximum the same for the Riverview or West Pasco area. And on the following slide, you'll see that map. But we've increased the height to thirty-five feet for multifamily. In the R1 district, we've done the same. In the R2 district, we've increased the height outright to thirty-five feet. I'm not sure why that actually was lower than the other, but it's an opportunity for us to remedy that. And here in the underlying blue, you see the changes. So we leave the lock coverage the same at forty percent for single family. But for multifamily, we have lock coverage determined by parking and setback requirements. And again, you'll remember that was a tool that was utilized in the part of Pasco's waterfront development district that you recently adopted towards the end of last year. In the R3 district, the single family remains the same at forty feet, with the multifamily increased to forty-five feet. And the lock coverage is the same again at sixty percent for a single family, determined by parking and setbacks for the multifamily units. And again, the same for R4, so some slight modifications there. So this is the Riverview West Pasco area. If you look in the draft ordinance, we we try to define this as being bound by Interstate 182, US 395, and the Columbia River to the south. You may remember this is the exact same map we use for the street connectivity amendment, where we had to be a little bit more flexible in the standards due to the development patterns in this area. So some numerous policy references that we believe this amendment address, or this proposal addresses. Obviously, the city of Pasco goals that were adopted this past fall, which encourage the city to take a look at affordable housing strategies, including the development of a housing action plan, which through the data analysis and collection we've done and this proposal before you tonight, we've really taken a big chunk out of that housing action or housing assessment plan already is is in progress today. The comprehensive plan, the 2020, 2024 Tri-Cities Consolidated Plan has three priorities, which we believe this proposal addresses. The Franklin Countywide Planning Policies encourages that each city develop their own set of affordable housing to meet the needs of the community. And obviously, I'll refer under the umbrella of the Washington State Growth Management Act. So I believe that's the last slide, but that's the proposal that staff's recommended for planning commission. Certainly, a lot of information to go over and over quite some time, but happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. And I want to acknowledge a lot of the effort that went into this. We've done a lot of learning and listening and given you some feedback, asked some questions. So I appreciate that this is now in one consolidated proposal. So colleagues, do we have any questions or comments for city staff? You do? Oh, okay. Well, Commissioner Cochrane.
Wanted to wait to see if the folks on the phone wanted to talk first. So a couple of questions. So the scenario proposing is, seems like it's essentially like the scenario two without the special permitting. And is the scenario proposing, is it the, is it actually reflect the fifteen thousand housing unit goal that was on the previous slide? Is that what we're hitting with this scenario? The one that was, sorry, it was way at the beginning, but yeah. Is is this the scenario that we will hit if this recommendation is approved?
Apologies. It it would allow us to become, to meet, to get closer to it than we are today.
Okay.
A little difficult to predict exactly what kind. The housing action plan actually will dive deeper into the types of units and also the income levels necessary for that. But that information is a little difficult to do without the help of outside resources.
But you believe this is, gets us the best, closest to that's with this recommendation?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question is just more maybe because I'm not a zoning guru like you guys are. But I noticed that you, in all of the zoning code, you dropped the references to two dwelling units per acre, three dwelling units per acre, four dwelling units per acre. Is that, I'm, I was just not clear on why that is related to these types of units and adding these units and why that's being eliminated from the code. And I'm sure you have a great reason. I just was curious why that's being eliminated.
Yeah, we, we actually, with the lot size actually regulates how many units you can get in an acre. So if you have a twenty thousand square foot lot size, under today's provisions, that's two units an acre. We also have that information again and and regulated through the comprehensive plan, land use designations. So it's just kind of a another effort to clean up the code.
Okay, so not directly rated, just a good cleanup effort while you're doing it. Good, thanks.
Terrific. So not seeing comments from any other commissioners, I will now open the public hearing. How about that? Any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item? Now is the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. Nada? Okay, all right. So public comment, going, going. Gone. All right, now, fellow commissioners, I would entertain a motion. Should you be so inclined? Oh, sure.
Commissioner Handler, I have a question first. I think I know the answer to this, Jacob, but when you say thirty-five feet, what is that measured to?
Thank you. That's the average between the even the peak, so it's the midpoint, I believe. It's not the very top, the average.
The average of a, or if it was a flat roof, you could go all the way to the top. You, if you use a flat roof, you could go thirty-five feet all the way up or. And pardon my, my question here, I just was curious what was in the thinking. So, okay, anyway, thank, thank you for that.
Does the mid, does the lot grade also impact? It's like it's thirty-five feet from as the lot grade goes up. And then it's like you take the midpoint of the grade, then it's thirty-five feet from that versus thirty-five feet from the bottom, if it's, if it's a slant and slope block.
There is wording that that does help narrow that down. I can't remember what it is, but yes, the grade is a factor on slope plots.
Okay. Yes, I'd love one.
Commissioner Handler, I so move.
All right, so how about you move to, I need you to read that. It's all right.
I move to close the public hearing on the proposed code amendment and set April 16, 2021 as a date for deliberations in the development of a recommendation for the city council.
Thank you. Would anyone second that?
Commissioner Myron will second that.
All right, so it, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Let the record show, it was moved by Commissioner Handler and seconded by Commissioner Myron, and the motion passed unanimously. Explanation of the path forward.
Yes, we'll, we'll bring back the ordinance final, for final recommendation in April. And in the meantime, also begin to prepare our submittal to the Department of Commerce as part of our contract with them regarding the funding agreement.
Nice. Thank you very much. See, I've been doing this for a year and I'm, I'm still making mistakes constantly. Yeah. So we're just giving each other some grace here. All right, so next we are moving on to, we have another public hearing. And this public hearing is a request for a code amendment. This is regarding mini storage in a C1 CR zoning districts. It's master file CA 2021 003. City staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for, as you have stated, mini storage in C1 and CR zoning districts. This code amendment was precipitated by the approval of a six hundred unit mini storage on St. Thomas Drive that was in a CR zone. And staff was wanting to either regulate or consider not allowing these in those two zoning districts. And those, the reasons have been outlined, and they've been discussed in previous meetings. But just to recap for our audience, retail uses do better in clusters, relying on synergistic relationships with other retail uses to draw customers. Retail uses do best in high visibility locations near major routes, such as freeways, arterials, and so forth to attract the attention of customers. As a ratio of available zoning, the city has a limited amount of retail zoning area. In fact, let me throw the numbers at you. We have a total of about approximately thirteen hundred acres of C1 and CR. And the breakdown for that is about twelve hundred acres of C1 zoning district and about ninety acres of CR. C1 is retail business and CR is regional commercial zones. Mini storage uses typically have a very low traffic volume, thus discouraging the kind of volume required for successful retail uses. And mini storage uses are typically utilitarian in nature and appearance. You've noticed in your staff report, there's a brief summary of commissioned comments considering option A, which was no mini storage in C1 and CR zones, and option B was to regulate them. I have attached as part of this report a rather robust representative regulation from the city of Linwood, Washington. And of course, Linwood's a different animal compared to the city of Pasco. But it gives you a, an idea of what regulating might look like. And I'm counting about three, three or four pages of regulations that might go into this kind of thing for your consideration. And you have also seen in the last meetings what some of the units look like. We've got one here on Santa Fe Parkway, and it's built back away from the road. That was done on purpose so as to hide a more utilitarian use from otherwise retail and office uses in that area. And then there's another one on Chapel Hill Boulevard. And again, you've got retail uses along the front and then the, the mini storages in the rear. And so these are some approaches that have been taken in the past. Not all the units, I think that was noted in the last meeting, not all units fall into that design category. We've got some off of Argent, and I think it's Road 30, 36 or 38, that are right there on the, on the road, that you can see them right from the road. But this is the Broadmore storage. You can see how, this is me taking a picture standing at the, what would be a sidewalk, if there's a sidewalk there. And you can see there's quite a bit of acreage between where I was standing and the actual units back there. And you can also tell that they have been developed with the I-182 corridor overlay aesthetic in mind. You've got some architectural detailing that makes them a little more attractive than warehousey looking stuff. And there's the Chapel Hill one, you see the retail in the front. I walked by there, when I took this picture, two of the three units were occupied. The center one was up for lease. But this is right across the street from some apartments. And then right next door is the Blale store with a Great Harvest attached to the side. So you get kind of a flavor for what that neighborhood looks like. So the consideration here is, again, whether this kind of a use is appropriate or not in retail zoning districts. And a lot of the commissioners kind of lean toward option one, saying, you know, we're using up valuable retail space with mini storage, and we're running out of retail space because of this. But I also heard some people saying, well, we could regulate them. And so this is a decision that the commission wants to consider. And so this is a decision that, um, the commission wants to consider. Um, whether option A, option B, and then if option B, then what kind of regulations would be appropriate. So that's kind of my summary.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Adams. Uh, commissioners, comments, questions? For city staff? I have a question. So, looking at those pictures, would those be options one or two? I mean, there would be two, I believe.
Yeah, option two. Option one was no mini storage at all in C one and CR zoning districts.
Okay. Commissioner Cochran?
Uh, just want you to know overall, I mean, I think we, m- overall, I think that I don't say we should have. Uh, option one is no, no mini storage. I think my position or my recommendation is, you know, a. We can have them, but let's try to add some lightweight and not too cumbersome for the developer regulations. That allow us to kind of achieve some of the aesthetic and setback and other purposes. So it's kind of that balance of, you know, let's not say we can't have them and, but let's try to make it. So that when they do do it, there, there's some balance that's achieved rather than just sucking up all the commercial space with mini storage, right? And, and so there's kind of that balance, that would be my perspective.
Hi, this is, uh.
Commissioner Myron, please. I would say take off your video. No, we can't.
Um, I was, yeah, I was in a couple. Oh, can't hear me okay?
You're coming in and out.
Uh, any luck now?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, uh, never mind, I will.
Do you want to put it in the chat?
And Ms- Mr. Myron, you may have accidentally self muted.
We don't know if that was intentional.
Okay, can I try again, does this work?
Yes, yes.
Alright, a tumbleweed must have hit the line. Um, I was curious about the previous slide. I think it was the Sander for, uh, developments, um, that showed the setback. Um, is the thinking for a development like that, that it preserves, uh, street frontage and, and that's particularly attractive to retail?
Heads.
I'm sorry, didn't quite get the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, is my signal still? Uh, yes, that's, that's the slide. Um, is, is the thinking that the, uh, street frontage is still preserved for retail and that's, that's why this is a workable solution?
Um, what I will say about this one is that that was the, the thinking that went into this specific development. Um, as far as an example of what we would do, that's still up in the air, we haven't landed on that yet.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so it, it would seem that, that you, you can maybe have a balance, strike a balance. Uh, I'm still a little bit concerned about the use of, of commercial space in general. Um, and once that land is utilized, you know, maybe, maybe those street frontages can't be used for retail. Um, so I, I'm a little bit in the air, but I'm probably leaning more toward a, a solution like Commissioner Cochran mentioned. That's, that's a balance. I thought the Linwood example was, was quite telling. Um, they, they have one particular, I think it's, um, section B of their code where they mention accessory use. Uh, only for certain, uh, property zones, where it's like something like only twenty percent. Of a building's floor area can be used. Uh, do you think that might be, uh, a possible solution? To either require a multi-story structure or some kind of smaller footprint requirement for certain areas?
That would be a possibility.
And, and Mr. Myron, I'll, I'll jump in. I, I, I don't think it would be very helpful. At least given Pasco's, um, personality, let's say. Um, it seems that the storage unit themselves don't have a lot of accessory uses and simply spread out. I, it's, it's kind of like structured parking here in, in the Tri-Cities. It's, it'd be great. But land is not yet at such a premium that you're gonna find it and able, you know, be able to justify the cost. Now, I did, um, and I hate, and I, and I know, I don't want to interrupt you, uh, Commissioner Myron. But I did want to, uh, suggest, uh, and this goes back to also to Mr. Cochran's comment. Um, does that, let's say, let's call it a balance, does that include? Um, freeing up space along the arterials for retail? Is that part of that balance question?
Uh, yeah, just, Commissioner Myron, just speaking on my own. Um, and I think you've, you've really hit where I, I'm, I feel a little bit of friction on this. Because on the one hand, I, I think accommodations could be made, but in this particular example, which may not be. Uh, reflective of every project, but you know, some of that, that street frontage is gonna be lost. I mean, what, what new corporate office could you put right by that driveway, uh, going in? Um, or, or, uh, you know, multi-story, uh, residential, commercial kind of structure, probably not too many. So, huh, I, I, I'm leaning toward maybe just being more, uh, uh, tot- totalitarian, if you will. Pardon the phrase, but just more, um, strict and, and perhaps limiting, uh. Storage in these zones, but if, you know, if there's some common ground that can be found, I'd be open to it. But I see staff's point that it's hard, it's hard to find that, that balance because. You may not be able to have both ways. You might be stuck with lane you can't use even after you've made those compromises. But I've spoken too much, uh, thank you for your feedback.
Terrific. Commissioner Handler?
Um, w- let, let me just say that if. I, I, I would think seriously that we should think about. Look, um, allowing, I'm not for allowing frankly, storage, these storage things. And either the C one or the CR because of what it does to any future potential. High activity, fun, urban-related, Pasco-related. Um, retail, commercial activities. I recall, I recall, um, on that site where, which is now, uh, either one on Chapel Hill and Road sixty-eight. I recall some site plans that sho- uh, of studies being done that had hotels and, and, and multifamily. Uh, really exci- exciting, uh, uh, complexes that would be of great benefit to the city of Pasco. And that whole neighborhood out there, but putting a storage facility in that, in that site as an example, completely eliminates that opportunity. You, you, and, and, and maybe, and I'm being a little bit harsh on this, but, but maybe, maybe it needs to have. You know, I don't, I don't know if, 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 if you would require a conditional use permit. It, uh, for storage facilities in C, in the, um. In these, in these zones or not, but frankly, I, I, I just don't see them being. I, I see them as being sort of an, a, a ball, a, a ball and chain to, to future development. For, you know, really healthy, exciting activities that enhance the, the city of Pasco. Anyway, I'm probably, uh, over, overstating it, but that's, that's how I feel. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Handler. Did you want to say something?
Yes.
Please.
These units already require a special permit in the C one and CR zones, and so. The, the question, I guess the question goes back to whether we should stop allowing that. Or should we put specific, um, requirements for those special permits? Cause right now it's, it's, um, pretty wide open. There's, there are no, and I think this was mentioned in the last meeting as well. That unless we put specifics in the regulations for these. The hearing examiner has no impetus to add anything. She's, all she's doing is looking at the facts and saying yes or no. And so if you want to regulate them, those regulations have to be spelled out.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add, um, I think one of the things that you may have noticed over the past few amendments that we've brought to the planning commission. Is the accessibility portion, uh, using a buffer, a distance, a quarter mile from a public amenity, for instance. So in the idea of, uh, right, retail land use or zoning district next to a park or a hospital. Um, you necessarily would put extra thought into as a storage unit, the best use of retail space next to a park. And so when we talk about possible, um, considerations for a blending of regulation and also tolerance. I think that may be an area that, that staff could explore more. Uh, are there some cities that have done that? And if not, should Pasco explore that on our own? Obviously, we've seen an explosion of these units in, in the region, and they'll likely consider. I'm, I'm sorry, increase as we continue to grow, but again, we're expecting another, uh, forty-eight thousand residents. And we need the retail space to accommodate, serve as employers and shopping, et cetera, for that, uh, population growth. So I think using a buffer, um, factor or component may be an appropriate, um, scenario or option for us as well.
I see heads nodding right now. Commissioner Cochran?
Yes, I, I mean, I think there's two different issues, right? One is, should we, you know, what discernment and measure should we use if granting a special's permit? That's the first issue, and I feel like what's happened in the past is, we've just said, okay, we've got a commercial space. Somebody wants a storage facility, let's go ahead and do that, and then the stuff that Chair, uh, Commissioner Handler, uh, mentions happened. Is like you got a beautiful site and it's ruined for future opportunities, and then, so maybe it's just, the first issue is. How can we put more discernment or, um, kind of scrutiny on whether special permits are granted? And say things like, okay, do we have enough density of storage? Do we have enough storage units in that general vicinity already? What's the overall storages, units we have in the city of Pasco? And is it enough to serve the citizens already? Um, and then the second issue comes down to, if we're gonna let one happen in a special permit, do we want some aesthetics around it? That's the second issue is like, so, okay, I'd love to see a brick wall, I'd love to see a iron, you know, a wrought iron fence. I'd love to see it integrated with commercial, and so maybe if you separated those two issues is. What scrutiny do you want to put in first, first case of even granting special permits? And then the second case, if we grant a special permit, what are some general aesthetic guidelines that might make it look nicer? So, that's my top, top process.
Commissioner Larmen?
I would like to piggyback onto what, um, Mr. Commissioner Cochran had said. Um, I see a third possible layer, and that is what to do with that hundred and fifty feet. So if we go back to the slide, that was the, um, uh, Chapel Hill, Road sixty-eight. Picture next to Blale feed. So from the building out to the road, how many feet is that?
Now, this one right here, this is the standard setback for, uh, a retail use. This is not the one that we used, the buffer. And so what you've got in the front, there's a landscape strip, you've got your parking in front, and then you've got your retail use. And so if you're talking about buffers, this is not the one we're, we're referring to.
Well, but, but ge- generally speaking, with the landscape strip and the, and the parking, it's, it's, let's say seventy-five-ish or so.
Okay.
But you can technically, in a retail zoning district, you can have a fifteen-foot buff, or fifteen-foot setback. So, that's kind of a different issue.
Okay, so what I was thinking is that, that's something I can visualize, and so two times the amount of distance from the road back to. The start of the mini storage would give even greater potential for possible other businesses to be in there. So that's the third thing that I was thinking about, so not just aesthetics, far as what is the decorative out, outlook of the building. But also what else can be done with that land, so you're not totally losing the, um, potential commercial use. And, um, high-density, um, uh, foot traffic and road traffic opportunities. So, I've, I'm actually waffling back and forth on this. I know this is a really, this is complicated, and I applaud the pictures that we saw. I think there are, you know, if we're gonna do it, it's a nice way to do it, but once it's done, it's done, and you can't move back. So I'm actually moving more towards option one, just outright, um, not allowing. Not allowing those uses in C one and CR zoning. You just want our feedback. I know we're not voting right now, but, um, it's, once it's gone, it's gone.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and, um, take this site here for example. Um, the big plot of land on both sides of that storage. I, I can tell you from experience that any proposed housing developer, or for that matter, retail developer. Bringing in, uh, new retail opportunities, uh, medical facilities or whatever. They're gonna have to deal with the issue of being a neighbor to a storage facility. And that frankly is gonna lower the value of that land, it's gonna lower the excitement of that land. And it's, I, I know you can plant a big row of trees there, but I, I've seen this too many times. You are still building next to a storage facility, it ha- it, and, and will have a significant bearing. And you know, and as, to repeat what was just said, uh, this is gonna be there forever. So, I, I'm, I'm agreeing, um, I, I like option one. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over. Thank you.
Um, I believe we're supposed to have a public hearing, correct? Alright, so with that, I am going to say that any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item. Now is the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. Yes, alright. Um, I'm gonna call three times, going, going, gone. And our motion, I'm still supposed to entertain a motion because it's to keep it open. Do we need a motion for that? Do we need to vote on it? Okay, if someone wouldn't mind making a motion.
This is Commissioner Cochran, I move the planning commission, continue the hearing to the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Where the planning commission will discuss possible regulations for mini storage uses in C one and CR zoning districts.
Commissioner Handler, I second that motion.
Oh, wait, do we still have to vote on it? Yeah, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, all opposed? Okay, so, um, the motion to continue the public hearing passed unanimously. Nice job, everybody. Okay, so, yes. Do, oh, you want to take a break? Okay.
No, no, I just, I, just me.
Yeah, but we have, we gotta stop it, right? If we do a bathroom break? Okay, so we're gonna take a five-minute bathroom break. Alright, good suggestion. Alright, we'll be back in five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I do not hear the music, but we're gonna, we're gonna move forward. All right, so we are back in public hearing mode. And next on our agenda is a code amendment. And this is a, uh, request for lots without public street frontage. And it's master file CA twenty-twenty-one zero-zero-five. We will start with the discussion from city staff.
Greetings again, uh, planning commission. You may remember, uh, this item actually from twenty-nineteen. It was adopted, uh, by the Pasco City Council in July of twenty-nineteen through ordinance four-four-four-four. Um, and the idea was to allow for some infill opportunities specifically with, uh, regards to residential infill, uh, with challenging terrain, topography, odd-shaped lots, uh, frontage challenges, et cetera, uh, to allow for residential development to occur. It essentially allowed residential lots to have legal access via a private or shared frontage on the public roadway. Uh, so there's frontage requirements that every lot must have, but in some cases, those lots don't have that, uh, they don't meet the minimum. So in circum, certain circumstances, this ordinance would allow you to do that. Uh, council, uh, during the adoption had asked staff to come back after a year to provide an update. And, uh, obviously, it's a little bit later than that. Uh, but, uh, in an effort to update the, uh, planning commission and council, staff has also taken a chance to refine the code and clean it up a bit as we've had a few lessons learned and potential, uh, mitigating future challenges with the code as it exists today. So on the next slide, just a little bit of background, we've actually had two approvals using this, uh, option. Uh, one, uh, off of Road fifty-six in Sylvester, um, in the R S twelve zoning district, and one, uh, off Cedar Avenue in south of Lewis Street, uh, was a habitat, uh, project for about eleven lots. I think in total, the, uh, lots without public frontage option allowed a total of an additional nine dwelling units. So obviously not a lot, but when we need fifteen thousand units, everyone counts. So with the combination of both, they were able to utilize, um, some, uh, this option to get some extra units in, installed. This actually, I thought, would be great to share with the planning commission. This was published in the Tri-City Area Journal of Business regarding the Habitat Project. The executive director noted that the code, although kind of hidden in the municipal requirements, allowed their project to actually pencil out and be feasible for them. So I think, uh, kudos to the, um, uh, to the adoption of this effort here. With that said, there are some, uh, revisions that staff is recommending after discussions, uh, and consultation with our fire department and public works and engineering staff. And those, uh, primarily include, uh, the pavement width. Right now, there's a varying, uh, width requirement depending on the number of units. That, that's tend, that's caused to be a little confusing, uh, not only for the implementation, but also for the applicant. So staff has, uh, proposed to just increase it to a minimum of twenty feet, which also mitigates any potential concerns with access for fire and emergency response. Fire trucks are, are long and large, so the turnaround, et cetera. Uh, so that would mitigate that challenge. We are also proposing to remove RS twenty as an option for this as well. Now, uh, you may remember that the whole intent was to allow for infill and increase in densities. However, we don't necessarily want to encourage septic densities, um, it, to occur throughout the city. Uh, so that would remove that. It also refers, uh, there's a lot of strikeouts from the proposal. It refers directly to the city of Pasco's design and construction standards and specifications, which is our engineering manual, kind of the partner to the municipal code that goes more into the specifics of design and engineering elements of a project such as street pavement, how it's constructed, et cetera. Our code had included some general information on that, which has also been, uh, uh, lacked clarity. So this just refers everything back to the document we should be referring them to. And also clarifies the application requirements for any proposals as well. We, we've been fielding quite a bit of calls on this, when it can be used, when it can't be used, how to justify it through the application process, et cetera. Staff has also tried to clean up the code to make that more, um, uh, visible and easier to, to comprehend for folks. So some pretty minor changes, but I think will have, again, a, a, a great benefit. I think staff would consider this effort a success, although we've only seen two applications of it. Again, it's allowed for nine additional units to be built. And as, uh, growth continues to occur in the city, along with some of the other amendments that, uh, planning commission and council has taken action on, including the lot size average, the missing middle adoption that took place earlier today, uh, this, this may be more widely used in the future.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Cochran?
Um, so is this, will this, uh, then? The twenty, so going from the twelve and fourteen pavement width to the twenty, um, do you anticipate that'll have an, an impact? I, on, for example, habitat humanity, would that like reduce the number of lots that we're able to fit in in their scenario? And in some other scenarios? I know it's difficult to tell in all scenarios, but like for the one, the habitat one that you brought up, would the twenty-foot would have reduced a couple of lots or one lot or?
Uh, it likely may have, and it likely will in the future. However, the city also has a requirement to ensure, uh, uh, fire services is available. And, uh, rather than challenge that in the future, we'd rather mitigate it from occurring in the first place.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a good balance. So you, you, but it will impact fewer lots, but you're allowing a good service.
Exactly.
And, and also, is the habitat one to the left or is it the one to the right?
Uh, apologies, the habitat is the, yeah, on the right, the Joel's addition is on the left with the cul-de-sac.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Gonzalez, so explain to me, I, I, pardon my naivety here, I, I don't, how do you access those lots that look to be landlocked? I see the cul-de-sac and, and, and the lots around the cul-de-sac, but, but the other ones, I don't, I don't see how you get to those.
So on the Joel's addition, for instance, uh, on the left side, um, to the west of the cul-de-sac, you'll see, it's probably difficult to see on this graphic here, but there's an access easement.
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
And when that access easement is more than a hundred and fifty feet between the public roads with the cul-de-sac and the end of the housing unit, a full cul-de-sac or turnaround is required. And I don't believe that was, uh, required in the option, I'm sorry, in the example on the left, but it, it could be. If that was exceeded, that's the fire turnaround, uh, requirement. And on the right side, the Habitat Project, um, they have shorter access easements. You can kind of see, uh, the rectangle access easement coming in from Cedar Avenue to the, uh, I think Mr. White is actually hovering right over one of the access easements right there. So they're privately owned, um, there's requirements on them, no parking, uh, maintenance, uh, it's, it's on the, uh, final plat, et cetera. Um, so those requirements will still remain the same. We're just gonna require the, uh, or propose to increase the minimum width, it's, of it itself.
Twenty feet. So, so, um, for example, the one road, um, accesses, uh, the two lots behind. And so, yeah, that, yeah, exactly. And, and so there's conceivably four cars that are gonna be going in and out of there. Uh, you know, pa- pa- parking in, in, in their houses and stuff.
Correct. And the code as it exists today, and we're not, um, proposing to change it either, is it maximizes the number of units that would have access to one of these to three? So a, a maximum of three units can have access to a private access, shared frontage.
Okay.
And with the Joel's addition and the Cedar, uh, Avenue, how has that been working over the last year?
Yeah, I, I drove by the Joel's addition and it's been, it's actually out there, there's no units on there yet, but the, uh, cul-de-sac and the access actually are visible from Sylvester Street. Um, I have not had the chance to go yet to the Cedar Avenue project, but I, that project, I, I thought was underway based on the, um, the publication.
It would just be helpful to know, to make this decision.
Well, yeah, and Jo- uh, Joel's addition, if you really wanted to see what it looks like now would be, there was a crew out there, it looks like they were surveying it, uh, or getting ready to put a unit on it. There are units permitted in both these subdivisions, but Joel's addition on fifty, uh, four, is it fifty-four?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six and Sylvester, you can really see that, you don't even have to get out of your car. You can really see a, a good example of how these lay out.
And it's north of Sylvester?
Yeah, just north of Wade Park.
Okay.
This is, Commissioner Teal, I just have a question. Is it all pavement then? So the access roads are all pavement, no gravel?
That, that's correct. And that was also one of the things we wanted to clarify in the proposal. What was that? We had kind of a long-winded requirement for pavement width versus easement width. And rather than, um, have that varying degree of uncertainty really for a project, uh, staff, uh, again, after consulting with public works and fire, uh, obviously, fire trucks need pavement to, to drive on and gravel was gonna be a concern for them. So we, uh, the proposal is to increase the width to twenty feet of paved, of a paved material. That meets the requirements of the city's design standards, which again are in that, uh, engineering document.
Okay, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Any individuals who wish to speak on this item, now is the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. Ah, going, going. I close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion. Yeah.
Commissioner Handler, I move, I move to close the public hearing on the proposed code amendment and set April sixteen, twenty-twenty-one as the date for deliberations and the development of a recommendation for the city council.
I second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show, it was moved by Commissioner Handler and seconded by Commissioner Larmen, and the motion passed unanimously. Explanation of the path forward, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, staff will, uh, again, prepare a shorter version of this, uh, including some examples of it, uh, on the ground today. And also have legal review the amendment prior to bringing it back to planning commission for a full recommendation.
Terrific, thank you. All right, so we are now moving on to workshop. Yay, we got through the public hearing, so proud of us. All right, so, um, next on the agenda is, uh, workshop items. This is actually a code amendment for a sign code. And I am looking for staff to give us some information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is a, uh, code amendment that's been in the works since, you can tell by the code amendment, uh, number twenty-nineteen, for a couple of years now. It's a very big project. Um, and as you've probably been told already, this is a two-phase, um, update of our current code. Phase one was in response to the U.S. Supreme Court's two thousand fifteen decision in Reed versus Town of Gilbert that required content neutrality in the regulation of temporary directional signs. And of course, this carried over to all signage. However, recent court decisions have been more lenient in this regard for commercial messages. And so, um, our objective here with our consultant was to address the content neutrality issue. And also while we were at it, to clean up the sign code, make it more clear and more accessible. And of course, um, phase two will be to, um, customize the code for certain areas of the town. But that's gonna be a, a later project. And so what we'd like to do tonight is we'd like to focus on the punch list that I have furnished in the report. And if you have any questions or comments in terms of, and, and staff has attempted to answer some of the consultant's questions there. Um, and so what we'd like to do is just get some, um, verification or comments or whatever, um, in terms of those punch list items. And then if there's anything else in the code that you've read that, um, sticks out, stands out like a sword throughout the thumb, we can discuss those items as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adams. My colleagues, any response to the punch list? Anything stand out to you?
I just was curious on the, um, the reduction from seven to three. Was it just the recommendation by the consultant that seven was too long? And what, what was the three-day? I think it's an item number five.
That was a, a staff suggestion. And again, it was just a suggestion.
Okay.
In terms of, and we're, from the city's standpoint, we're thinking of, uh, enforcement.
But I mean, it basically says if a, a vehicle is, if it's more than three days, then it can be considered out of compliance in this suggestion.
Right, and I guess the reason why we're, staff has thought about that is that we have seen, um, instances where, uh, a commercial owner would park a box truck, for example, with, you know, the, the logo on it in their parking lot, along the street frontage as a de facto sign.
Gotcha.
And from a, uh, enforcement perspective, you know, if you leave it there for seven days and you drive it on Sunday, it's still a de facto sign. So that, that was the thinking behind that suggestion.
And the, I don't know, I mean, obviously, the consultant knows about this, but what was a specific, if you have a summary, what was the Seamy Valley case that was the issue here? Do you know anything about that? Why that was a factor? Is it because somebody sued somebody because the city didn't allow them to let, leave it long enough or?
I don't know, I don't have the background on that, I'm sorry.
I just had a question on number sixteen. The off-premises directional signs. Can you, do you have any idea why it was being proposed changed to one point five miles versus five miles?
That again was a staff comment. Um, when you get so far away from a use that you don't know how to get there, especially in the tri-cities where you can get anywhere in the tri-cities in fifteen minutes, um, that five miles is halfway across town. And so, um, there's, in most cases, there's really no good reason to have an off-premise sign that far away from a use. But that was, that was staff's. But that was, that was staff's thought on that.
That makes sense. Thank you.
I had a question on the ideological signs. Does that mean, is this applied to election signs? So is this saying that, or is it just for ideological statements? Because I mean, there's a lot of people that wanna, you know, put more than one candidate's sign in their yard. Is, or is it, is it, are those excluded or?
Where, what line are you referring to?
Line thirteen, or punch list item thirteen. Temporary ideological signs. I just don't know what an ideological sign, if that includes all candidate election signs or if that's something else.
I believe that would include election candidates or proposals, items on an election ballot, or just my opinion, you know, pro this or anti this.
That's a good point.